Let's call the meeting to order, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our meeting tonight. At this time, I'd like to give a call to Nancy Baker, Ronnie Beadle, Paul Fossen, Larry Cox here, Casey Cooper, Carolyn Cowles,
Here.
Joyce Edwards, Maggie Walther,
Here.
Vicki Green, Martina Harris.
I have a call for this.
Dr. Jeff Heck.
Here.
Ed Johansson.
Here.
Michael Lavender. Kevin Guinness. Ed has her proxy. Marsh Pittman.
Here.
Dupoe. And Ed has her proxy. Mandy Stone. And Mandy has Charles Lyne's proxy. Duncan Selter. Ed Charlton.
Here.
And Ed has, they have Charles Lyne's.
Thank you for calling the Comex Meet Now Conference. Please thank your panel for all the help and support.
Mandy has Charles Lyne's. Ed Johansson has Nancy Baker's proxy. Ed has Dupoe's. Vicki Green has Ronnie Beadle's. How's that work? Yeah, and Carolyn has Martina Harris. So we have a... Pat's gonna be trying to patch in. Good luck with that, too, yeah. Hi, who's in this place?
This is Pat.
Hi, Pat.
Hello.
Hey, Pat, can you hear us? Pat?
I was in line.
Pat, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's too quiet right now, but I'm here.
Okay. Well, I would like to ask everyone tonight who would speak up, state your name for the record. This has been quite a few minutes. The motion's correct. At this time, we will have public comment. First, Kathy White.
Dr. Catherine Reuter, the parent of an adult on the Innovations Waiver, an advocate and a former case manager. I want to start with a concern and end for a change on a positive note. I think sometimes you think I have nothing positive to say. I guess my question isn't going to sound real positive. I looked at the data from the quality report that indicated complaints for July through September from consumers were about access to service and quality of services. That was 50 percent of the complaints. That's concerning to me that both access and quality are that represented. But I guess it kind of fits with the gaps in needs assessment that found providers aren't out there for some people. Those two seem to go together, and I was okay with that. Then I saw the data about the provider survey. Fifty-five percent providers consider audits and investigations not fair and not thorough. Fifty-five percent find corrective action plans are not fair and not reasonable. Fifty-eight percent are not satisfied with the appeals process. That's a concern. And that's a concern because that lack of positive feelings for Smokey was evident at the Innovations Waiver stakeholder meeting. I attend those meetings. I'm not a member, but I attend. And in November, I volunteered and subsequently received comments from providers to pass on about the waiver, and I anonymously forwarded them because there is a stated fear of retribution. Now Duncan's not here. He speaks for the providers. But obviously, warm and fuzzy feelings are not there with the providers. And it doesn't get any better when, you know, Brian states in public that he plans to do away with small providers. I don't really know what a small provider is, but my experience is that small providers do a really super job on person-centered services. An example of a small provider doing wonderful things is from my son, Thomas. You met him several months ago. He used community networking services to go to AB Tech to take wood shop, except for the fact he cut his finger one time. He's having a wonderful time. He has now a 10-hour-a-month job fixing the equipment at the AB Tech and got his first life ever at 26 official paycheck. So he turned community networking to supported employment, and that was because a small provider said, "Oh, these pieces are going to work for you." I don't always have complaints, but I do have concerns about the access and the quality of services and providers being afraid to say something to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Short.
Yep. Hello. I am Mary Short, and I'm from Alexander County. And that is my daughter Katie. Katie is 35 years old and severely profoundly intellectually disabled. I have been having some interesting phone calls with folks in Washington, D.C. from the Department of Labor. I contacted them after attending a provider training on a new Department of Labor rule that goes into effect January 1st that declares the services provided under the 1915(c) waiver and all 1915(c) waivers. Those of you who are county commissioners are aware of how it's going to affect your CAP DA waivers. And that Department of Labor rule now places us out of companion care and into the Protections of the Fair Labor Standards Act. And it was so fascinating to discover issues regarding control and issues regarding reasonableness that the Department of Labor looks at. And it's just fabulous that as long as the LMEs and MCOs and the state, for that matter, they're the ones that write the waiver, right? It's fascinating to me that the control that the LME/MCO exerts over the relative-as-direct support employee puts you in the position of being a joint employer. Cool? Because now, as joint employer, when the backup staff doesn't show up and I work those hours, you're going to have to pay that and under the Fair Labor Standards Act. Now, there seems to be an issue about when they're going to start enforcing it, but it doesn't stop private enforcement actions. But it's not just about this waiver. It's about all the 1915(c) waivers. And it's not just about relatives-as-direct support employees. There's an interesting rule about reasonableness that I just can't wait to get more detailed information about how that's going to change things for us and for elderly and other adult-disabled individuals on the CAP DA waiver. But it's been really fun. And you sort of combine that with what's going on with Medicaid reform and the secretary's position that she really wants provider, that doctor, to be the driver of Medicaid services. Kind of gives me hope that maybe things are going to work out for the IDD population and being able to throw into the, with the long-term services and supports crowd with the elderly and the other adult-disabled, because there's tens of thousands more of them than there are of us. So I guess I just wanted to leave you with something that I was feeling hopeful about. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I love it when we have public comment. You know, it brings a little bit of common sense to an educated board. You know, when you get educated, you don't understand common sense, and there's something wrong. But the thing that is striking me about the MCO, and if you've been around long enough, and it looks like a few of you are old enough to have been around long enough anyway. The Governor's advocacy council, I guess you remember them. At that time, that was back in 1978 when I first started. And I had some help from them. They covered the whole state of North Carolina. And even though it was under the administration of the governor, it was a good program because you did get heard on issues related to school issues and the rights of parents and civil rights issues and things that really meant something to the families. And you had somebody that would go to bat for you, even at that time. Now, they've done away with the Governor's advocacy council, and they give it to disability rights, and you might as well, you know, go home as to call them because you ain't going to get hurt. They don't do nothing but big cases, and if you're not a, you know, a major player, you're not going to get hurt by them. So then you got lawyers that used to help with special education and rights of individuals. Now you can't even find one unless you want to pay $25,000 retention fee. And there's only two or three in the state that even look your way. Then you got advocates that used to be out there that was for autism, for the disabling mental health, and other people and agencies. What's happened now? You don't even find them anymore. They don't even advocate. And to find somebody rare as I am, they ain't nobody in North Carolina like me. Most of them contest that. And now, it's come down to the MCO. And I'm going to have to say it straight here, as I can. I think you're under charge for something that I don't know that you've got your arm even started around and to add is to help with these special-needs children in school and the issues around the provider network that you've got. The provider network should be educated to the rights of individuals in what they are entitled to under the federal and state law. And I do not think that your people, staff, unless it's the attorneys, they might have a little knowledge of it. But when it comes to special education, I think that the prevention of the rights of parents and children in school is the key to what you're dealing with as adults and children right now. Because until we get down to providing that type of advocacy and telling parents and these providers need to be understanding this law, that they should be able to tell parents and give them a little bit of help on how to file paperwork and even grievances or whatever with the state. Until this happens, I don't think that parents and children are going to get what they need in school. If you didn't have a team of people that I'm speaking to issues that relate to, I'd like to sit down and talk to them because I haven't found it in the organization. But I'd be happy to sit down with them because I've got a head full of knowledge that I must share about schools and advocacy and about rights of children and parents that is getting run over. And I appreciate if you point me in somebody's direction that could help me on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, at this time, has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? If so, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Who made the motion? Okay, Carl made the motion, and Mike, just a second. Any discussion, all in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
PFA? Is she now? Okay. Review and approval of the prior meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting? If so, is there a motion for approval?
For move.
Is there, Ed made a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Larry Cox, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the minutes, meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
You want to point it, okay? All right, Tracy, conference business disclosure.
There have been no additional conference meetings reported. As always, if any more members have any conference meetings reported, please attend.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Consumer and Family Advisory Committee report. Pat, are you going to do that, or is Judy? Can you hear me?
Judy's going to do it. I just want to say I enjoyed working with you, and I appreciate the time and, uh, likewise.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Glad to have worked with you for these many years, Judy.
Thank you.
Judy?
Mayors tried enough to put this together for me since I haven't asked for the board meeting in a month or so. Can y'all hear me? I might not be able to do this.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Hold on. My voice is getting overlooked. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
C-FAC members had a steering committee meeting in November, and a lot of housekeeping items were taken care of. And we redid the C-FAC brochure, changed the meeting schedule, and then relooked at the relational agreement between Spoken Out for One Directors and the C-FAC. We approved a bylaws to include a C-FAC board member... Oh, thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
We realized I wasn't a member of the board. Thank you. C-FAC Board Member responsibilities and the appointed process. And it's a work group developing a draft that... We continue to have our meetings, most of C-FAC meetings, in December. I attended the Western Region last night. Excuse me. And it was exciting because we had a little bit of introduction to Project 526, which I'm really excited about. I'm assuming that we mentioned this before. As far as other things, C-FAC members have been involved in, I believe that both Pat and Nancy went to the recent, his community council programs conference in Plymouth. I'm not able to attend that one. But I did attend Nancy Tides Conference in... Where was that? Pardon? Anyway, which was very interesting to me because of integrated pathways, which is one I wanted to go. This kind of goes along with Project 526 and the future of smoking. I guess that's all I have to say. Oh.
I have one more thing I want to add when you get to Judy.
Okay, I forgot to mention the reason I was bringing up Nancy Tides Conference, which I thoroughly enjoyed, is also Brian Shooking loves smoking and Nancy Baker put on the Human Rights Breakout Society at the conference. That was exciting. Okay, Pat.
I see that took some action. We know that Judy's term is up for a second term, and C-FAC 100 percent support Judy. I think I sent an email to the nominee committee, but I just want to say that C-FAC 100 percent support Judy her and second term representative, please.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Provider Advisory Council report. Duncan is not here, so I guess we'll wait till next month to get enough data on that. Next is the County Commissioner Advisory Board report. I call Shelley Foreman. Shelley, can you give us a...
And Michael, would you like to start?
Go ahead.
First, let me say what a pleasure, as always, it is to work with Michael. He is right now in the board position as the county commissioner member to our board. And after tonight, it appears that will be changing. He'll be now large member. Michael has put a lot of time, energy, and effort in working with Ryan, myself, and other staff to really help kick off the County Commissioner Advisory Council and to help start it with success. So, Michael, thank you so much for your help and support. We had our second meeting of the County Commissioner Advisory Council meeting in November. We had a really, I think, very good meeting and one that was, I think, approved and something that was enjoyed by both the county managers and the commissioners in attendance. We were able to help give them a briefing, orientation, and review of the Smokey funding service system, looking at our sources of funding at the Medicaid state local level, looking at how we pool those funds in the way of comprehensive care centers at the regional level, and then breaking things down to look at services by predominant providers in each region, the kinds of services they have, and also being able to provide them some county-specific information. Brian did the presentation that night. Many of our staff were there to answer questions. But I think it really helped the county commissioners and county managers there get a broad picture of how we're funded, how we use our funds. And I think it's a great point of conversation to start working with this group as we move forward to look at more specific issues in the future. We will, we will be continuing to meet once a quarter. If first we need board members or if they'd like to attend, we can certainly let you know the meeting calendar. But I'd just like to see, Michael, if you have anything you would like to add as far as the meeting we had last month or discussed last month or anything in general.
No, I think you did a good job. We, I do want to thank staff, Brian, Shelley, all of your efforts, did a very good job on the presentation.
Just one last reminder. As you know, we just had an election cycle. What that means is some of the members that we have in the County Commissioner Advisory Council will be changing. We have asked all the county managers to let us know this month during their first board meeting in December who will be the new county commissioner appointee. So as soon as we get that final information, we're about halfway there, I'll complete the list and make sure you as a board have access to that information so you know who your county commissioner representative is.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you, Michael. Okay, our next item is the report of the Finance Committee. And I'd like to call one, Fred, you want to give us that report tonight?
Sure. This will happen in three portions. One is just presenting a review of our current position from July 1st through October 31st as a reporting period. But this is also an opportunity to present, the extraordinary opportunity to present to audits to the board for FY 2014. Please keep in mind that Western Highlands, as an entity, Smokey did not have managerial control until October 2013. Western Highlands did not dissolve as an entity until the end of January of 2014. So there is a formal audit, which is required from July 1st to the end of that entity in January. That is incorporated in part, and we will declare what the transfer is into Smokey's audit, which covers the entire period. So we have both audits to present to you tonight and both auditors to make that presentation. I'll do my first part. It'll begin in a bridge kind of fashion, and then I will defer to my colleagues tomorrow. The Finance Committee did meet and reviewed the balance sheet, that is, the big sheet in your distribution packet. Cash and checking in the interest account was at $70 million mark. The risk reserve account is at $14 million. We do have investments in the North Carolina Capital Trust Management, and that's at $13.7, $13.8. Keep in mind, Mr. Collins had the majority of his funds in the North Carolina trust. We had a very small account that has since been consolidated into Smokey's name. This is a consolidated balance base to accounts in 2014. Of significance on the asset side is the growing accounts receivable Medicaid waiver. It is currently at $5.4 million. That is a net figure that is half, meaning we're allowed, the allowance for doubtful accounts, 15 percent. So that is half of what we are due or what we feel we are due for the division of medical assistance and what is outstanding. This is a continuation and a buildup of the issue of accounts receivable in that division. To give a very, very brief report on it, some progress has been made. It is still much slower, perform more limited than I would have ever anticipated. The amounts are growing, not only for us, Smokey as a individual entity, but all of these MCOs throughout the state. And remains an outstanding issue with that. And I assure you when this will be resolved, I can't give you any specific date. Progress has been glacial. It's been really, really, really slow. The large category debate affected, which I'm concerned about, is that AFDC category that it's into. The largest accounts in terms of service areas that is not being fully represented for, if you have any questions or concerns.
I would just add, you know, I don't participate. It's a kind of a technical work group that I don't participate in. I think Fred does and some staff. I mean, in my estimation, and I really question the state's ability to ever be able to properly reconcile this. I think it is likely that at some point, we will probably have to get into some negotiation over a settlement amount that we agree is acceptable for us to receive in terms of that AR. I love a million dollars, it's a lot of money to do. So I'm going to be in Raleigh on Monday, not on this business, but while I'm there, I think I will ask about that. And as Fred indicated, we are like others and we're kind of in a relationship pretty much to your compensation and payment ratio. What people are owed is probably state-wide in favor of those $60 million at this point. So it's a lot of money.
Is the fact that the money is still outstanding negatively impacting our current ability to provide services?
It is not. Good question, though. Not currently.
How long would it take?
How long will it take to resolve?
How long would it take to support this investment?
It will not impact us in FY 2016 and have all of my debt and all my connection. FY 16, I would hesitate to guess. But in this special period, it would not.
Really? We have such a need in certain areas that we have to admit that we have the money.
Yeah, I, Fred is giving you the answers a little different than how I would answer. Because...
Are you disagreeing?
I'm just providing an alternative viewpoint, I think, is how I would classify it. You know, we, at times, use the money effectively to drive service development. You know, I'll give you a really concrete example. That is with rate enhancements that we give for psychiatry and some outpatient counseling services. And we're just at the point of talking about essentially doubling the rate for facility-based crisis. And those are big changes in our Medicaid budget. So when we have reason to really escalate spending in certain categories, it is nice to have the ability to do that. It's like having a sports car that could drive 150 miles an hour. And are you going to drive it 150? No, you're not. You might get into a situation with an on-ramp or something where having that acceleration really... really helps. How would you feel about that?
Oh, good, that's a little race car, we'll take that and follow it up.
So, it's...
Quite good.
As a response to that question, it's important, but it would be really hard to understand how everything else would be.
Okay, moving to the liabilities part of the balance sheet, where approximately $8.1 million payable on the IDNR state, $713,000 on the IDNR Medicaid, is at $15.7, call it that. Talking about the fund balance, what has been earned, the revenue over expense from the beginning of this period to the end of October is just under $4.3 million. On average, we're talking about current assets over current liabilities on the Medicaid side of 2.6, which is pretty healthy, and 3.8 as far as what is called funds, so it's a healthy measure of liquidity for the state. Going to the second sheet, which, first of all, revenues and expense, I will just summarize some of the major items. Under Medicaid total, our surplus for the period, again, from July 2nd to August, is just about $2.4 million on the service side, on the administration side, about $1.9 million for the net earnings for the period, call it 4.3, let's call it that. There are a number of dashboards that are presented, I won't really try and get into the detail of it, but it does give a overall view of both Medicaid funds, services, and how that stands, and how the medical expenditure deals, and both are healthy. The only other note that I would make is under Medicaid claims, you're saying that there is an area of concern in innovations, in innovation and PRTF, where we're really at close to non-trading spenders in this category, while overall, the revenue over expense, you know, some categories will be around that. That being said, unless there are questions, I will leave report as is and ask the board to confirm the financial report.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the natural court?
There is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
A second. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Nonsense? Okay.
Part two, Western Highlands audit. You got it, okay?
I'm Dan Mullins, I'm a recent and new partner at Full State CPA Group out of Asheville here, off of Cox Avenue. When you came in, you received, I believe, two financial statements, they have a blue on the side, so you know which one we're looking at. There's a standard letter, and then there's the financial statements.
Is there something beyond this, Dan?
Yeah, there's something beyond this. It's good to take it out.
While we're doing that, I know you came in, how many ten minutes did I get, probably?
Thanks for a great live meeting.
Looks like I can proceed with this. So, this audit is from the period starting July 1st, 2013, through the time when we ended, ended an effective date of January 23rd, 2014, and that is the exact day when the board was resolved, and when, at that point, basically, all assets, liabilities, net assets were moved over to Smokey. If you turn to page 1 and 2 in the financial statement, this is the same opinion you would receive in the previous year, it's unmodified opinion, and a clean opinion. The numbers presented in the financial statement, we believe are materially correct, especially the balances that were there on January 23rd being transferred over to Smokey. I worked with Smokey's auditors recently, and last one was the reconciling, making sure balances that, the due to from Smokey for expenses paid by Smokey on behalf of last term, that that net payable is in agreement with our financial statements. The one piece, pages 3 through page 9, management's discussion analysis, I won't go into great detail with this, but this is a narrative form description of the financial statements. It describes what happened in a simplistic manner to the reader, but I will, one thing brings to your attention is really dealing with the waiver program. When the waiver program started at Western, the first year, there was a deficit with the program. And at that time, they, the entity kept track of what that negative number was and determined where it is at any point in time. And up through the merger, the, there was a surplus, unrestricted surplus excluding risk reserve of about $6 million at that point in time, when the entity was renewed up. So, I know that was something that, the number that former board members on Westerns were looking at.
Those of us who are involved, we're monitoring this monthly, so...
And then to bring it to your, I think I can see you look in your face like, how in the world did that happen?
It's crazy.
Based on that, if you turn to page 11, this gives us an overall snapshot for the three-month period. The change in position before the transfer was $8.5 million for the year. And you can see, looking on there, during that three-month period, waiver, specifically, you received $40 million, and waiver program expense for that period was about $35 million. And that's attributable to mostly the MPE rate increase in January, beginning of the year. So, that, the bottom, you see the net position beginning of the year of $20 million, .2 million dollars, well, then by the end, on January 23rd, a net asset value, meaning all your assets that Western had, all the liabilities, you had a net position of about $20.2 million. And that was the amount of net asset that was transferred over to Smokey. It's like a Christmas gift, I guess, if you want to say. If you go to page 10, you can see on page 10 the balance sheet as of that day. On that day, there's zeros, and that's on purpose, because everything was transferred over to Smokey. But if you turn to page 24, 25, this is a summary of what was transferred over. Total assets of about $33 million, liabilities, net liabilities of about $4.6 million, bringing down to about $28 million that was transferred over. The other part of our testing, even though it was three months ended through September, there was, you see state funds during that period, you see federal funds during that period, and we still performed a governmental audit on the entity during that period, we have a clean opinion for that portion of the audit, and that's on pages 29 and 30. Pages 31 through 32 is an opinion on the federal testing single audit. There was one program we tested, and that was the block grant for community-based programs, substance abuse. And then for state awards, state funding, there was, we have a clean opinion for two programs, funding that we tested, single stream, and the client service funding during that period. We did have two findings, not material findings, but we considered significant deficiencies. One of those related to MCO contracts not being approved until after the fact. This was the same finding as the previous year. The reason it exists was because they weren't, it wasn't brought to the attention until after September 30th last year, so it had to exist since it was in the prior audit. The other thing was really, not the client, state award level, it deals with claim submission of individuals are required, required to be involved in CMDS, and submitting claims to the NC Track systems. They really need to be approved before they go submit claims, but that is really a problem with NC Tracks, not really entity, but because it's kind of like, when we do compliance testing, if it's an issue, it's an issue no matter who's at fault. We do believe these two, depending on how proven NC Tracks in the future, that Smokey's procedures will make sure that, especially those that contracts are signed before they exist, and I have to believe that. The other letter that we provided is a standard letter, it's just three pages. It describes the financial presentation, it describes really what I've just went over with you, and it also provides just communication to you that we did not have disagreements with management, we worked with management, we worked with Smokey, all of these firms, to go over various items, and that's pretty much it for the letter. But again, I thank you for allowing our firm to perform the audit, and it's been a pleasure working with special marks, especially Wayne, it's funny how you never, you always hear about you know people through people, and I know them, I used to work for two of his best friends.
Yes, we, so let me make this clear for those of us who serve on the Smokey on the Western Board. So, you're saying that when Western Highlands is off, we brought the board, the net transfer over the $6 million, and that was positive?
The amount, the net assets probably was $20, $20.2 million.
But that, but after everything else, so you're saying that the end of the Medicaid waiver, whenever we said that Western Highlands was on backer, in fact, they had revenue over transferred to about $6 million?
Over the what?
Over the Medicaid waiver. So, Western Highlands, wish the press was here, and we fought this battle, so are, and wish Chuck was here, because all the time he's been through. Actually, the Medicaid waiver had a positive cash flow over length of the waiver, you did it to about $6 million?
Thank you.
Have I made my point?
You have.
Thank you. We fought hard to get there, and we deeply appreciate what Smokey did. We really, within board members, and I'll speak for myself, I think all of us really appreciated, but there was a misnomer that Western Highlands was going backer, and it was mismanaged. Yes, there were management problems, the board stepped in, we had good management in the end, and great leadership, Brian, and probably helpful working with Martin, which in the end, Western Highlands was physically solid with the transfer, and the positive transfer. I just, that was portrayed very differently by a lot of people, I just wanted to contribute to the board, I appreciate taking the presentation, helping you there.
Over the life of the waiver, and I'm still not fair, $20 million or $6 million, your reports are the same, or $20 million?
That is the net position of the current, of all of Western Highlands.
But we were criticized by the state very severely, and right from the start in the beginning, but in the end, we fixed it, and I think, we continue to use Western Highlands as a bad example, is thoroughly inappropriate. Thank you, I'll go off my soapbox.
Let me, Carl, I hear, you, we had a lot of discussions about this, and I think one of the features, I would just add to what you said, and it really represented our position all along, you're always communicating to the Western Board, is that no one really knew how much money there was. And if you look at our AR estimates, and our IDNR, I mean, we really had, you know, no one had any idea what the financial position was, and a lot of the concerns had to do with that, and...
I think to the folks, the consultants, and the Western Highlands board, and then working with the school filling, Dan, and this folks, especially Brutus, they did a good job trying to flush all that out, so that, you know, the boards do have a good sense, and management has a better sense of where the numbers are, we need Medicaid waivers than we ever did two years ago. And I'm not usually one of the proudest accountants or lawyers, but in this case, I'd probably praise them both. They helped an awful lot.
I would say this, that Chad worked diligently, dispatched here, to get, to dig down into the trenches and make sure the balances. One thing that didn't help was, back from state level reporting, to reconcile to some report that's accurate, it's hard to. So, and that's one reason for the delay of, it's more in December now, and this is January, it took that long to make sure that all payments have been, receivables have been collected, or payments that we agreed to pay aren't accurate, so...
Thank you, Chair.
President.
President Chairman, this would be a formal acceptance of the audit?
For what?
For what? I think it'd be best to do that in the board.
A little acceptance of the audit for Western Highlands?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You've got one.
Any more comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Fred?
Okay. Jerry Hicks is a management partner on the board, he's going to start it off in good required audit or new questions and pieces upfront, and then I'll get into a high-level discussion of the financial statements after that. At the same time, to echo what Dan said, we worked very closely together in the last two, three weeks, even, as all the final pieces started coming together, so it was good that we ever had another firm that we could communicate with, because that was in one of these order issues. Yes, I gave it three out of these involved, but one CPA who jumped the gun and issued his audit report, and his numbers didn't really, but the other firm, so we had some issues at the end, we were at that one house.
I think everybody has a packet now, pretty thick packed, we included a lot of information in there. We're just going to focus really on the first couple tabs, our required communications, and Wayne's going to go through kind of a high level of your financial statements. Just so you know, behind the final tab, tab G is the full financial statement draft, if you want to take a look at that in detail. The remainder of the information in there, just kind of some information for you, some accounting trends, some trends about what's going on kind of in the industry, just for you, for your information to take a look at. Behind tab A, required audit communications. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We have issued a, or will issue an unmodified opinion on the statements, which is the highest level assurance that we can offer, or a clean opinion. We do plan to perform the audit to obtain reasonable...
Um, just so you know, behind the final tab, um, tab G is the full, um, financial statement draft, if you want to take a look at that in detail. The remainder of the information in there, just kind of some information for you, uh, some accounting trends, some trends about what's going on kind of in the industry, um, just for you, for your information to take a look at. Um, behind tab A, required auditor communications. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We have issued a, or will issue an unmodified opinion on the statements, which is the highest level assurance that we can offer, a word clean opinion. Um, we do plan to perform the audit to obtain reasonable, um, assurance that the financial statements are reasonable, as you're in the statement. Uh, we evaluate and assess controls of the financial reporting. We use that analysis along with our risk assessment to kind of set up the procedures that we perform during the audit. Uh, we do utilize the risk-based audit, which we focus on more risk, more of the risk areas for the entity when we implement our procedures. As far as significant accounting policies go, the entity is responsible for those policies, and they are outlined in note one to your financial statements. Um, no significant changes in accounting policies or new policies adopted, so disclosures of your financial statements are fairly consistent with the prior year. One thing to point out is that, and it's specifically in note four, where he talks about the merger with Western Highlands and the amount that we transferred, that is new disclosure, and also there's, there's also new, um, disclosure, I guess, information within the interview, and he talked about the merger as well this year. Significant accounting estimates, the largest estimate is the, uh, IDNR, the liability incurred, but not reported claims, we quite a bit of testing around that with our audit procedures, uh, based on the procedures that we perform, it appears that estimate is reasonable. Um, flipping over to the next tab, uh, we did have some audit adjustments, you can see the effect of some of those adjustments. A lot of them did delay to, um, here at the end, where we're reconciling the current hurt between Western Highlands and Smokey. Also has some reclassifications related to, uh, the conversion of the financial statements to the full accruals required, unfortunate financial statements. Um, no disclosures from the entity, we want to thank them for their help during the audit process. Um, upcoming sessions of engagement, engagement management will provide us with a signed representation letter. Turn it over to Wayne.
Okay. Uh, starting on page B1, behind the B tab, uh, with the report format, just go just briefly. The audit opinion is the first reported document in the report. Uh, management discussing and analysis is after that, the statements on the full accrual basis follow the MDNA, uh, then there's an agency fund statement, the notes, the supplement scheduled to make the statutory, uh, statutory requirements related to both carry canon follow that. There's a section on the OPEB benefits, uh, required documentation, the notes, and then the single audit proportion, the client section. Um, yes, Jeremy said that the audit report, uh, unmodified, that's the highest level assurance that may be, may be achieved. Statement of net position, in the case of continued improvement in financial condition. Your unrestricted cash balances at year-end equated to one hundred and thirteen days of operations, especially in two thousand fourteen, which is up, uh, forty days from the prior year, so this is net combined increase in the cause of murder and, uh, profitable operations. Your unrestricted net position was approximately fifty, almost fifty-seven million, which is twenty percent of the two thousand fourteen operating expenses in, in group of the prior year. If you include your net accounts receivable with cash, it's about one hundred and nineteen days of operating cash and receivables available to the initial obligations, as that can be, of net revenues were over budget, operating expenditures were under, revenues increased by about a hundred and fifty-one million dollars on the prior year, expenditures increased by almost one hundred and thirty, forty million on the prior year. Revenues exceeded expenditures by twenty-four million. Smokey administered, uh, fifty-six million dollars of federal and state financial assistance in two thousand fourteen, that's a double amount from the prior year. Uh, no material instances of non-compliance or laws or regulations related to federal or state programs, and findings related to documentation from medical records. We did have once again the efficiency and internal control over financial reporting, and we're recommending, uh, that Smokey adopt, uh, the full, the full accrual method of canon. They've been using sort of a hybrid cash modified accrual system where accounts receivables and payments were not recorded in the department, they were recorded in the receipts, so there's a lag, and it's, uh, actually probably not as much detail on those items if they would have been incorporated into the general canon records. So our subsidiary records are not in the general, uh, process now, in a way. Uh, management's agreed with that, and they understand the issue. Uh, again, we appreciate the assistance from staff. If, when you try to look at these transfers between Western and, and Smokey schedules that he has and I have, you might get slightly confused in there, a brief comparison of the difference. The only net difference we have is about two, three hundred dollars. Minor issue with book base, capital letters, and just, we, 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 we were working on these transfers up until last night, so staff has agreed that we're, we have the numbers right now, we had a couple entries to make in the last minute, trying to make sure that either the Western entry or either the Smokey entry, it's a particular day situation, we've got to be careful. Any questions?
Any others need a motion to adopt approved? Yeah. Is there a motion for that approval? Call. May a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We had a second. More discussion or any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pose?
Aye.
None, so, is Dan wants to?
I have a final, uh, comment. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce new senior director for accounting, that's my deputy that I, uh, it's been a joy to, to experience how she works, and how she wrote the staff, her special, and her, 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 her.
Um, this is Smokey from Transylvania Regional Hospital, which is all my mission. I've also worked at NPLS, so I always heard this amazing thing about this organization, and I was very excited.
Next item is, call on Carl to give us a performance quality review.
I would refer to Julie or Brian or I could just... We'd like to, okay.
Oh. The chair.
All right. Uh, we reviewed a number of different reports, uh, the, uh, the one we spent most time having did with the, uh, and, and mostly the reports frankly were, um, relatively speaking good, they reflected well on the organization, uh, they reflected well, uh, on our standards or our percentages relative to the state, um, and they were, and they were generally consistent with other MCOs, uh, they were one report, you'd be aware of it, we're not, but I think there's a reason why, and that is the, uh, I guess it's, uh, how it provided such a smoking, and it's going to be a, coming out, and that turned out pretty, it's going to show that we're, this provider satisfaction, it's going to show us a pretty love. Problem is, it also reflects an awful lot that, um, is questionable now, especially given the fact that MCO and things like that came into play. There are some concerns in it though, and it is something we need to work, uh, staff, in our opinion, committee needs to work more closely with, uh, with providers to make sure we are continuing to provide the level of access and, um, information and integrity to the providers that they can accept. I also look at it kind of like, for those of us in the academy, it's like building inspections. If we do a good job with building inspections, we always have to remember that the providers aren't our clients, it's the citizens, and, uh, the, uh, the building inspection is the property, uh, people are going to live there, the fire is reserved. And so, I look at the provider satisfaction with some yawned eye, if you will, or some qualified eye, and, uh, I might, Jeff, they want to add in, but, uh, Jeff always brings up this issue of, and, and it's so critical, is looking at readmissions, the hospitals, looking at some of those quality of care issues, there in some of the other reports, and, uh, we continue to want to have more data on that and monitor that more closely. We are concerned about some areas, um, also, uh, a few, obviously, a few other areas I'll stop, but overall, the reports on the organization relative to other MCOs, relative to state standards are overall very good. We appreciate the opportunity to have a chance to review all these, Jeff, last minute comments?
I, I think there's one metric that the entire board ought to be just looking at all the time, to, to look at, just impact of services, and that's the percentage of people who, who, uh, are admitted to the hospital for any mental health or something to do problem, that are new to Smokey. Um, the second number would be the number of admissions, overall admissions per, per thousand, uh, to the hospital and to the ED, and the third is the number of readmissions within thirty days. That has a lot of political importance and impact, if, if we have, if, if there are, um, people who are admit, readmitted to the hospital, um, without, especially without having been seen, um, that, that's a, that's, uh, that's a potentially preventable cause for readmission. So, they're, they're really hard numbers to get to, they're, they're low overall, but it's the number we should always be looking at, driving that down as far as we can. Um, I, as, as somebody who manages a lot of primary care practices, I would say we are just as equally guilty of that, in fact, if we were really doing our job well out of the region in primary care, uh, all those numbers would be better. And, um, but that's where it requires, I think, collaboration amongst, uh, both medical and health providers. It's important, um...
Julie, what do we miss?
I don't think you did, sir.
So, the committee is a good report, thank you, Chairman, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Other, any questions?
We just had a comment, you know, we're gonna, we spent a lot of time thinking, um, and I think in a very fair way about that, uh, you know, provider survey, and, you know, it's too bad Duncan isn't here, because we get, you know, some very kind of heart-to-heart meetings with a provider council, that, uh, I, I guess, I, I'd be very honest in saying you're very surprised with a lot of the results, um...
Well, I, I'm interrupting, because what's strange about it is the providers don't like the provider council?
Yeah, it's...
And it was like, you know, you know, what's going on here? So...
It's the kind of thing that is hard, and I guess here's how I would, what we want to do is get to a point where we have, well, and we're involved in an internal QI process around all of it, to try to look at each department's responsibility for a lot of these areas, and, and it, it's hard to get to actionable things, and looking at the results of the survey is the real problem with it. So really, our effort with the QI part would be to get to a point where we could do an additional survey to try to get at things that we can really point to, to change and do differently. So, that's, I guess, I could go on and on, because we've spent a lot of time, you know, thinking about this and talking about it internally, but that's our strategy at this point.
Part of the transition to the MCO L and E model, we are not a service provider, we rely on other people to provide services, funding that we provide, and so we need to have a good sense of integrity and, um, respect between the Smokey staff and the provider staff, but the bottom line is, we, the key is, one of the services the providers are providing for citizens, and, you know, sometimes the Smokey staff is going to have to lay down a handle, hopefully rare, hopefully they will walk through the provider, but those providers are not providing the services. You're not going to get the good support from them. And, uh, you know, that's, in the end, I, I used, I, I was ripped about numbers, but in the end, that's really what you gather, I hope, our principal focus on. I know you're arguing with...
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, I want to call on Tracy Hayes to give us the nominations for two thousand fifteen board directors, you feeling for you agree?
Um, most of you, let me know if you can hear me. Most of you will recall that Dignity made a presentation from the nominating committee at the last meeting, and so, assuming it is your responsibility to vote on recommendations, um, there have been a couple of changes because, um, as most of you know, because as most of you know, Carl has announced his pending retirement from Rutherford County, um, and he and I spoke about this earlier, um, he is willing to continue to serve on our board through at least February or longer, if we do not find a replacement. Um, so he will stay in his one-year slot, and it talked about recommending that Carl move into a two-year slot, so we're not going to do that simply because of his retirement. So the recommendations are, um, for Larry Cox to be reappointed to a three-year term, Joyce Edwards to be reappointed to a three-year term, Myrna Harris to be reappointed to a three-year term. All three CFAC members have been reappointed by the CFAC, that's Judy Jo Hanson, Nancy Baker, and Pat Guinness. Um, Duncan Sumter is still the president of the provider council, and will continue on board in that capacity. Um, the recommendation for Dr. Heck was that he would move into a non-voting slot in recognition of the potential conflict of interest, um, with his position at MAHEC. Casey Cooper, the recommendation was no change, um, he currently is in a two-year slot. Michael Lavender, the recommendation was for, uh, Mr. Lavender to be moved from the county commissioner slot into an at-large slot, that's a two-year slot. Vicki Green, the recommendation was for Vicki to move into the county commissioner slot, currently held by Michael Lavender, and that's also a two-year slot. Um, the recommendation is for March Pittman, no change, uh, Mr. Pittman is in a two-year slot. The recommendation for Maggie Faulkner, no change, she is in a two-year slot. Recommendation for Ronnie Beal, Carolyn Coward, Rick French, Judy Poe, Mandy Stone, and Chuck Vines, who are all in three-year slots, is no change, they will continue in those three-year slots. Um, and, and this would probably be a good time to also recognize that Ed, um, has some announcements to make about his status on the board. And then for the slate of officers, the recommendation was no change, um, Rick French will continue as chair, uh, Chuck Vines as vice chair, and Ronnie Beal, Michael Lavender, and Mandy Stone will continue on executive committee. So those were the recommendations of your nominating committee, um, your, do you announce to them?
Is there a motion for approval of the, uh, recommendation from the, my man?
I make a motion, I think, I didn't hear part of it, but, uh, I definitely am in favor of Judy saying, and she sounded like she talked about everybody, but I didn't hear mine.
I said your name, Pat, I can hear it.
Okay, Pat, may I pose?
You are still on the board, Pat.
Okay, I, 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 I'll make a motion that we accept the nominating committee's rights.
Okay, you have a motion, is there a second? Carl, second. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pose?
Aye.
Okay. Um, a couple items, uh, I want to mention. Uh, first, you had a, in your pack, you had a, a calendar of board of director meeting deck two thousand fifteen, did everybody have a chance to look at that? Our next meeting will be January twenty-second, uh, we have a retreat scheduled for February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, um, there's more on that coming, uh, the rest of the dates, we did not have a board meeting to go on, or let them. And I'd be, uh, approve of the board meeting deck two thousand fifteen, board meeting deck. Chair, a question?
No, sir.
Okay, Larry Cox, committee. Any questions or comments? All in favor of meeting decks are scheduled for two thousand fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Uh, just a couple, one other thing I want to mention, uh, a number of us attended the North Carolina Council meeting last week, uh, Pat Guinness, Judy Poe, Ed Charles, and myself, and Brian, Christina, a number of staff also attended, I see a number of us attended, thought we all found it very informative, a lot of good information that we shared. Uh, also, I was appointed to NCACC mental health task force by twenty... Also, I was appointed to NCACC Mental Health Task Force by my video. We got our meeting first meeting last week, and I'll get some information off of you about that. At this time, I'll call on Brian to give us the chief executive officer.
Okay. I want to try to tie together a couple of things here. Move as quickly as we can for things. The, our move to Ridgefield, let me just remind you, or tie whatever it is in first place. Movements never come on. But we realized even really early on that the site we occupy, 356 Bildmore, could provide much greater benefit as a treatment facility than an administrative office. So we asked for forgiveness of a little time to get our feet under us. And, you know, remember that we needed to figure out a way to get out of there so that we could free it up to become what we would imagine to be a very comprehensive outpatient crisis service center. And on the Smokey moving out of it part, I guess that's going pretty well. We are going to be down in Ridgefield, and you know, that complex over in South Florida, it houses a lot of, a lot of folks. We're slated to be there, well, according to the landlord and his building company, the first of January. Personally think that's ever going to happen. But they're working hard to meet that date. I think probably February first, I would guess that maybe by the, sometime in February, some number of people from Smokey will be working out of there. But, you know, our goal is to completely leave 356 Bildmore, except for a small IT, basically our, a lot of our server room and hardware is there and it's, the infrastructure related to that is very expensive. There's fire suppression and generators and all kinds of things we're going to retain that there. But the other side of this is to repurpose the facility to a full-blown and say, you know, here we go again, but we don't have an official name for it. So it gets talked about in a lot of different ways and we heard, you know, tonight, I think, one, one person talked about it as as 356 Bildmore, and we have the Buncombe County Community Care Center and and the Urgent Care Center, and all of those things, that's what I'm talking about. And it coincides nicely with a pot of money that the state has that's being made available through an RFP that's part of the crisis services initiative. And bottom line is, there'll probably be about four grants, around a million dollars each. And we should be very well suited to receive one of those. I certainly hope we will be, we've done a lot of work. And what that would allow us to do is to consolidate the operations of many of the activities that RHA currently does in Buncombe County. So that the Facility-Based Crisis Program is referred to as Neil Dobins, sixteen-bed Facility-Based Crisis Program, that would be located there. Their adult outpatient services would be located there. They would do a certain amount of dispatch of mobile crisis from there. We would be adding a pharmacy that would be operated by a separate provider. And we would augment that with a twenty-four-seven presence around drop-off and law enforcement. So what that means is, the program, we're in twenty-four-seven, would be able to do crisis assessments, involuntary commitments, and work on placement activities. And we've really always been able to reach, you know, prescribers, but that would be augmented so that people in very emergent conditions could be received. And that's a huge improvement over the limited ability that Neil Dobins has because of the physical space and just the staffing to be able to do now. In addition, we would have a lounge program, a bar calounger, a recliner program. It's, it's kind of an odd thing. It doesn't really exist as a service definition, but think of it as a, as a crisis respite for adults. And it's been very, very successful by providers that operate this level of care. In fact, RHA does that in the east and makes very good use of that. I think we're going to get six, eight, eight of those chairs. And, you know, again, these things, because there's no service definition associated with it, it just represents a cost for which there is no reimbursement. Right? Because all of that area has to be supervised. So it's a, it's a great addition to the continuum. And it's the kind of thing that is exactly what is needed. We're still working on another part of the equation, which would be, well, once Neil Dobins relocates to that site, what would we do with Neil Dobins? And we're under discussion around whether we could have an additional sixteen beds of mathematical detox, which there's a tremendous need for, and a huge expense for. The deficit on that is about one point eight million dollars because there's no Medicaid reimbursement for that. And it comes out of state funds and county funds now. You know, I need to really give, you know, Buncombe County a great thanks tonight in front of all of you there at the table on this project for, I don't know, we're probably getting up around one point three million dollars by the time we get done. Both in terms of the capital commitment and operating costs. And just this afternoon during executive committee, I got an email from San Diego Commission. They're in for about a million dollars. It's costing us two million dollars to move. I mean, you see what it takes to do these things. It's, it's nothing small, nothing small. But a fantastic benefit for the community. Again, we will see what appears to be the best use of that additional space that the county owns that is Neil Dobins. And one alternative that we've kind of begun to think about is whether or not a facility-based crisis for kids could meet a need there and be financially viable. It's hard because you look at what is most needed in terms of the kind of presentations at the ED and what we understand about the community, and then you look at what can you fund? And we're kind of, you know, still in that, in that conversation. Me and you have been, you know, certainly been close to this, certainly offer you an opportunity to make some comments. And again, just so much appreciate the partnership we've had with the county, couldn't do it without you.
We appreciate the opportunity to be at the table. This is my key and mission. I think those are expensive services and challenging services we own and build. And because it's used for behavioral health purposes, it's open to Smokey counties as a whole. And, you know, nobody understands better than me the challenges counties face in trying to meet the various needs, some individuals for their communities, some we all share. But the reality is that what we use by other counties in that one, is the primary, has been confused with Neil Dobins as well as the redesign. We, we consume more than, than other counties collectively, and I appreciate that, but I do think at some point, it's important discussion. How we sustain it beyond the state grant funds.
Yeah, it really has an awful lot to do with the state and county funds we have for individuals who are either uninsured or underinsured and have no means to pay. And, you know, and I shared a fairly unpopular statistic with the county commissioners when we met. When we look at MCOs across the state and the precarious MOE funding, we're dead last. And our amount is one-third of the state average. And, you know, I'm not complaining to you, I'm stating a fact that directly affects our ability to deliver service, and this is a, you know, a perfect example of that. So, the art job is always going to be to do the best with what, you know, the cards were dealt financially, or the public policy, or what have you. And, you know, this is a good example of a lot of people coming to the table to make something really good happen. So, that will begin as soon as we can get out of the building. I mean, there's been tremendous amount of effort, any few deserves a lot of credit for this. I think, you know, on the day we're out of there, people will probably be in there with hammers and crowbars and sawzalls. It's, you know, been a very, very fulfilling group that has kind of imagined this, and again, we're hopeful state will look favorably on our application for that, so.
I think that, that is very exciting to connect, to go out to work in something very similar. And the continuum, we were able to, you know, I think that centralized, which is great, we were closer to a lot of enforcement. We were focused and prevented a lot of folks from having to go back to hospital. It was just, wasn't everything every person, but I feel like it was effective. There were so many people that were agents for and a chair that otherwise would have had a much longer path, certain attendings. So I, it's exciting to be here on that, and I think it's a great, great thing. I see it work.
Yeah, well, it makes no sense, and, you know, we know that's a, this is a model that reflects it.
I wonder, would you mention the requirements that are in the consumer?
Oh.
Really like the support to ensure a piece of the model that you're doing.
That's what I was going to say, that's what I was going to speak to. As a person, if you don't mind, in fact, as a person with lived experience, that what they were calling is the peer-run living room.
Right.
Was very, very exciting to me along with the chair idea. And in my experience, I've seen in the larger cities where there are multiple safe paths or safe places where people can go and adjust, there's just someone there to talk to. And help them get their foot on the ground, their feet on the ground, and I think that would be tremendous in helping families to have that made, as peer run.
I can't believe I forgot that. I, you know, we've talked about this so much for the last three days, I just like throw it in my brain.
Well, like for instance, in Mason County, the twelve-step recovery rooms on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, bred the public library, which is two times, we have tons of resources available to do that for people and in very special times for people that have behavioral mental health problems. So, but that's just two evenings out of the year, and this is the twenty-fourth. So, three hundred fifty states, right?
There you go.
I'm very excited about that.
Well, and this would be a great, you know, a great topic, you know, for the board to really be in touch with. Because it's a great example of, you know, initiative really, you know, Jerry's always fortunately reminding us that all of this is about people, and, you know, that's never lost coming here, you'll be happy here. And this is all about that. So if we kind of bring this up, we could have RHA come in and talk about this. And, you know, it's very directly focused at a lot of the problems we understand in the system right now, so. It's good. Medicaid and healthcare reform. We copied, you know, I, I think that the media can probably do this as well as I can. We have some really good articles in the paper, this one came out, it's in your packet. Talks about recent Medicaid reform and LLC meaning. And, you know, it demonstrates the differences, I guess, in the positions between the Senate and the House and and DHHS in terms of the approach. I think there's pretty good alignment around the advancement of provider-led networks, kind of care organizations with the House and DHHS and, you know, kind of a big swing in terms of amendments that were made to a recent report with the Nelson Dollar Act, pushed over the goal line here this week. If you haven't had a chance to read that article, I would recommend you do. It's, it's kind of a lot of the same, but I think our efforts in relationship to the work that we're doing with Mission and Mayhem around ACO or some kind of a regional umbrella organization that could help to integrate healthcare delivery in Western New York. We start to see comments that are related to that in the media. And in fact, we copied some, not exactly minutes, we, we get compliments of of one of our consultants, almost a process recording of conversations that occurred at the LLC. And if you look at the yellow highlighted areas on the standout, I think you can see that in some of the conversations we're having, and some of the ideas that were being, that we are proposing are being heard and being talked about pretty positively. Certainly the regional access to care, a lot of the language we use there from Nelson Dollar, and then Senator Hyatt, you know, makes particular reference to MCOs and ACOs and their parent readiness to go forward. So we're, we're pretty happy about that. Headed to Raleigh on Monday for another meeting with the DHHS to advance our position. And disappointed that Dr. Heck can't go with us, Mark and I will be there. And Carol Larson trying to really get some, some stakes in the ground. Certainly Jeff wants to offer you an opportunity to make some comments. You've been a full-fledged member of this and invented some of the meetings I have and others, so share your viewpoints.
I, there's a lot of things to be said about it, I think, but the most important thing is, in the end, this will be a positive thing for the people in Western North Carolina. And it would definitely enhance the integration of behavioral health and, and physical health. That's the really key component. The way that, the way that we're currently able to manage Medicaid is in, in, on the physical side is not rational, it's not, it's not comprehensive enough. It's, it's underpaid. There are all kinds of things, things with it, but I think provider-led ACOs particularly have the ability to make much more rational use of the funding. This is very comprehensive for, and we've talked to, we've talked to, in, in Western North Carolina, almost all of the hospital CEOs, many of the providers. When people fully comprehend what we're talking about, we're not getting significant benefits. And we're getting a lot of, I think anybody that's worked with Medicaid knows that that needs to be a change. So it's, it's, it's an exciting development, but unfortunately, it's very political also.
Well, getting ready to be exceptionally so with the session starting in January, so we're really trying to create as much as we can here.
The one thing that, the one thing I think is just really an important concept is, is that currently the state spends fourteen billion dollars on Medicaid. And I think appropriately so, the General Assembly, the governor said, you know, what we want more than anything is budget certainty. And there's just this, there's this difference of how that can be done. Budget certainty is the, is the imperative. And then underneath that, there are a number of different ways to do it. The House and the governor and, and us here in Western North Carolina really believe that the best way to get budget certainty is actually to, to have the, have provider-led ACOs really lead the way, a one-hundred fifteen waiver and ambition to that. And, and what that does is keep the resources in Western North Carolina. The alternative, which is a Senate plan, is that if, if we, is to give the, just write the check to an outside HMO, outside HMOs, and I mean outside, outside of the state. They would, they would say, we'll do it, we'll do it for you. But they would take their fifteen percent off for administrative overhead and for payback to the shareholders. That's two billion dollars in healthcare that leaves the state. And, and I think everybody agrees that that would be a wrong thing for the state. And I don't personally want to, I have to, I have to support a, a large insurance company in Connecticut or in Florida. So we just have to have our act together. We have to make sure that we can present the right material and be focused on what we're doing.
There you have it. Keep plowing ahead. Keep plowing ahead. Okay. Rick mentioned Pinehurst, it was great, it was great this year. And I will say that we are getting quite a bit of attention with our initiative with Mission, and positive, so it was nice to hear that. And before I forget, I want to, you know, recognize Mark Malloy, who's relatively new addition to Mission, who is their health plan guru, I guess. And, you know, he's just been doing a tremendous job, not only for Mission, I mean, and it's almost too bad sometimes, you know, Mission can kind of get a bad rap on this. You know, this is about Western North Carolina. Mission just happens to be the biggest healthcare, healthcare provider. And just like Smokey is the biggest kind of managed care behavioral health provider, you know, we're just the ones that have stepped up. And, you know, Mark's done a tremendous job, he's been great for me to partner up with, you know, we do some things individually, do some things together, it's been very rewarding to find an organization like Mission that is so progressive and thoughtful in the way they have gone about this, and gone and found somebody who has the capacities that he does. So, it's great fortune, and, you know, we should be very thankful for that. We have kind of a special Danny Plan for this evening. You know, we've used this, and you gotta give Jerry credit, challenging us especially, and this is out of my old bag of tricks, when I was a CEO at a provider agency in New York, we had the same thing, had the same kind of challenges, where we have a board and talk about, you know, money and administration and policy, and the force is talking about people. You know, I instituted this thing called Danny Plan, and it was, every month an opportunity to really focus on somebody or a family and just, you know, help us keep our feet on the ground. And we're gonna take a little twist tonight, we're gonna talk about a person, and it's Ed Taral, it's not gonna be about somebody who's receiving some of our services, but somebody who's been providing services, I guess you could say, alongside us, and in recognition. Don't you start pointing your pen at me. So, I'm sitting at Pinehurst, and I think we might have been having a cocktail, ready to have dinner or something. Brian, I got some bad news for you. When a board member comes to a CEO and says, I have some bad news for you, I can assure you that it does get your attention.
I didn't say it was bad news, I got something to talk to you about.
Yeah, and then you said it was bad news. I remembered, there was words. And Ed went on to share with me what at that point, I think he only shared with a handful of people that through a whole chain of events, found himself with an opportunity to move to the coast, and had seized that opportunity, and holy cow, by the way, this would be his final council meeting, you know, last Friday at the conference, and this would be his final board meeting here at Smokey. And it was like, woken. It's been a pillar, you know, and for me, you know, he was part of a group, I'm trying to think of who else was part of that at that time. Are you doing one last?
Sure, to me.
Yeah. Rick, you and Rick, and I think the others.
All that I know of in this room.
Yeah. You know, they hired me originally, and I can remember the questions Ed asked me about three times, about who I thought your boss really was, how I would report to the board or something like that, and I guess I got, did I get the answer right every time?
Yes, sure.
Okay, well, so that started our relationship, and it's grown over the, over the years that I've been here, being one of our, you know, Ed has been, you know, for me, a great sounding board, and as you well know, just a very level-headed man. And boy, back in the New River days, holy cow, we had a lot of challenges in working through all of that, and had did a lot of things nobody ever knows about behind the scenes, and he was our chairperson, remember, we went to those big meetings out there, eat at the Daniel Boone, and tried to smoke a peace pipe, oh my gosh, the iced tea or the lemonade you had with the moon or the foundation, you could write a book.
Parting that good.
Yeah. And some of the things that Ed's been involved with, and many of you who are new board members, you know, would just, you know, not know anything about. So, we wanted to take an opportunity tonight to, you know, thank it, and it began thanking, and, and almost a legacy, I think, certainly in my tenure here at Smokey, and very hard to see him go, very hard to see him go. But I hope he'll come up here, and we'll at least start with this, and I guess you and other people might get something to say, and I will, I will, I did get a call from Ryan, or he came over today. And, you know, Ryan, he was terribly disappointed that he couldn't come, but I did promise to deliver a message to him, and I'll do that, do that shortly, so. Now, Rick, you get up here too, don't be shy, doesn't look bad, be shy. We're all good friends here, it says, presented to Ed Taral, December twenty-fourteen, Smokey Mountain LME MCO, Board of Directors expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude for your board member service. Your paramount leadership, dedication, and uncommon wisdom have set the standard for commitment to our community, and we have our heartfelt thanks. And those are some good words to really describe how people feel about you. Hold on. Come on. And we get. Let me, let me, I'll start off with Ryan, and I know a lot of you would like to, like to speak to Ed and speak to everyone here in terms of your recollections in the region as well. And so, Ronnie called, he explained this crazy story about what's going on in Mason County, I'll bury it, but when we eat dinner, you get a big kick out of anybody that works for the county government. He said, well, awful sorry, I can't make it, but, you know, please tell Ed two things for me. Number one, tell him I love him. Number two, tell him, don't bother getting me a Christmas gift or a card just sent back. In behalf of, in behalf of Ronnie, I'll kick it off. Now, let's see. Do this, do this.
No.
Here, looks like you got some gifts to promote. Apparently, that's how this works.
Yes, that's how it works.
Works.
It's a little chum chum. In case anyone ever says you're really worried, this is why I'm smoking in the council.
Oh, this is, this is your counsel?
Yeah. Presiding as a counsel.
Yeah, I've spent the last two years as president of council, later on I'll go north like that, so also, last week, I'm there.
Thank you very much. Very esteemed.
Their board's pretty.
Looks like you got some else here. I don't think both of you have.
Ed B., I wanted you to have something that every time you look at it, you remember us, this morning. And we also wanted to be something that you and Shirley would enjoy, so this is perfect. And Shirley.
I know, look at this, I'm reading the card sheet.
Then, the answer is.
This is from, is that what, Sabatina, at the bar?
So, it's a local product.
Beautiful work, beautiful work, thank you. So, very, very much.
When we come down for a retreat, I think oysters on cash.
Boy, what a whole thing, that's great.
Hold it, hold it.
You can handle that. You want a roast, you want a whole?
I want a hash, I want a hash.
Thank you very much. All of you, if you have anything to add, I appreciate you very much. I told him not to do, I could be all out of this, but I'm just, you know, wanting to be.
I figured, you can't do it now.
Yeah. Thank you so, so very much.
And, yeah, it looks like you say, I tell you, you and I have been good friends, and I enjoyed our time together here, and I know that when you told me about your news, I was very happy for you, because I know that you'll be close to your family, but I want you to know that you're part of our family here too. So, I have enjoyed working with you. There's something about you that was your warm smile, and your laugh, and your, just the way you sort of talk to people, and you're very calming, and how you care about folks, and we're definitely just that, and I just want to tell you too, I love you, and appreciate all the time for smoking.
Thank you, my friend. Couple minutes. For some time, our kids have been, I turned seventy-nine this year, and my wife yesterday was seventy-eight, and our kids have been on our case for some time too. We need to move closer to one of them. We're about two and a half, forty-five minutes, two and a half, two hours and forty-five minutes from the nearest. So, we had this opportunity to buy the house, we lived at Beach before, and we have friends there, we have a church there that we're familiar with, we have a miniature base already there established, so this is not new to us. And we had the opportunity to buy this house, we bought it, and it come a lot quicker than we had anticipated, we love the mountains, we love everything about it, but that's the way that it is. Let me tell you though about Smokey. It's been almost eight years I've served on this board, and when I come on this board, when both county commissioners appointed me to the at-large position on the board, I was a junior to board, I'll tell you that, I knew nothing about mental health, I knew nothing about DD. I did know something about substance abuse, I was a son who had had that problem for most of his life. And that was the reason that Charlie and the board, or the county commissioners, put me on here to start it. It has been a great learning experience. The beautiful part of it is though, is the people. All the board members, the staff here at Smokey, the staff is phenomenal, and teaching me, letting the board know what's going on. If you listen to these folks, I don't care what kind of board member you are, if you've never heard of any of this, you're gonna learn. All you've got to do is just listen, or ask them, you will get an answer. Thank you for that privilege, folks. Thank you so very much. It's a fellow thing for me, I'm not missing, I will miss it. Thanks again, everyone. Great people, great work. Thank you.
Looking right along, I guess. We have nothing more than some agendas at my question. We have a couple items from your other business we'll mention. First, I can introduce Yvonne French with DHHS, our LME MCO liaison at Smokey, we'd like to welcome you tonight, if there's anything you'd like to say, we welcome you to our meeting tonight.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here and I'm looking forward to working with Smokey and learning more about the system, very wonderful things to have.
Thank you. And also, before you leave tonight, board members, the staff has picked us some very nice gifts, they're at the other end of the room, and those are for the board members, and so, don't forget to pick one up before you leave tonight, so I was gonna mention that. And of course, we still have a closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A one and A three, to consult on the attorneys in order to prevent the exposure of information that's privileged or confidential pursuant to the OCS statute number one twenty-two C, three one twenty-six point one, or not considered public records within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two of the General Statutes. And I need to entertain a motion to hold a closed session at this time. Motion's there a second.
There.
Yes, there a second, leaving a third. All the makers say aye.
First of all, eleven million dollars is about three percent of the overall operating license type of period of service. So, that's the scope of what we're dealing with. In terms of revenue recognition, so you can mind you work on your tool basis, what we're recognizing is half of what we think we are owed. So, what we're talking about here is that margin between what the doubtful percentage and management's behavior as a result of that. The whole motion of accounts receivable is that we are owed money, but we don't have the cash. Once the cash is received, it's no longer receivable. So, as you manage services for what we are responsible for, you have to take a more conservative view about what the organization's capabilities have to be. So, instead of going at eighty-five miles an hour, you go at eighty. You have to keep in mind the budget as you are currently allocated more stringently with fewer degrees of freedom, because one, you don't know whether you're going to receive that one point five percent that you think you are owed, you believe you are owed, you can support you are owed, and two, you don't have the cash. So, it matters in terms of service provision, I sit on service management within the organization, and quite frankly, I and those staff on finance department that work for me have to remind the clinicians in reference to some constraints in terms of consideration about how they administer services that perhaps would not be as constrained if this were not an issue. So, in other words, we are managing within our means, and what that means is a sense of conservatism that perhaps we would not have to so stringently abide by were this not to the mission.
Thank you. And don't forget, there's, again, there's some Christmas gifts for board members to find, and don't forget dinner's served, so is there a motion to adjourn? Man, you made the motion, and...
I'm happy to.
All the speakers say aye?
Yeah, the other faces.